Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here today. I am, of course, Yolanda Clark and filling in for our president, Randy Lopez, who may be joining online, but I will be facilitating our meeting tonight. So, thank you all for being here. Starters, as we do at every board meeting, we'll start with our board norms and our board protocol. As a board, we respect, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how we should conduct our meetings, to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And with that, I will ask Ms. Smith to please do roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez. Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, I'd entertain a motion to approve our regular board agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have our community comments. I do not see anyone listed, but as a reminder to our community, you are always welcome to come and speak to our board. We would ask that you work with our board clerk, Ms. Smith, and those comments must be turned in Monday prior to any board meeting by 12:00. So, again, Ms. Smith would be your contact if you had any further questions on that. Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda. Board, I'd entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to set aside J like Jack.
So, set aside J?
Correct.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Minus J.
Minus J. So, I'd ask those that have made the motion, are we okay? We're gonna, are you okay making that change? So, we would, I'd ask for a motion to approve the updated, the updated agenda, removing J at this point.
You already have it. Not debatable.
Right. So, second. Call for the vote. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez. Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Now J. Well, Dr. Stubblefield, could I ask a couple of questions, please?
Absolutely.
That, just looking at the student data, help me remember how many, are these, are these, is there just one section, one class of Algebra I? Or are there more than one?
More than ones. So, the previous year, if you, on the link, it's in there, we had four classes at Harmon High School, four at Sligo High School, one at Washington. So, the number corresponding with the school is equal to a class, not a...
The proximity learning building support chart?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. So, I'd like to ask then, using, referencing the proximity learning student data.
Okay.
PDF. Are you there?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, one can always look at something half-full or half-empty. So, I choose to, let's start with the half-full. What, what, I guess, did, did anyone at these schools evaluate, let's say, the math seven, let's say the math seven, forty percent, almost forty-one percent got an A? Or even a hundred percent got an A in physical science? Is there any, moving forward, is there any knowledge or analysis of what, what made these students successful?
So, the preliminary data, similar to the classroom teacher data, it really is about, like, the support and structure. Some is dependent upon the teacher and the students that they're serving. And a lot of it also depends on the monitor that's in the room, that provides the support and how they're working with the online teacher. But, when we looked at it, similar to our regular classrooms, there are some teachers who do a better job of engaging and connecting with students and making sure that they're reteaching and doing those things. And there are some that we have to work with and to make, to work with the teacher to make sure that that is happening. We did not, to my knowledge, and I'll defer to Dr. Campbell, and I think HR just was responsible for the staffing, but I'll defer to them. I don't think that we, in particular, like, looked at this particular data and then, and have broken it down to say, why did these kids have a hundred percent? A hundred percent of them get an A, and then, in this course, thirty percent were failing. The, that's the stuff, those are the things that we'll take the time to look at this summer and wrap back around to the building principals and learning coaches in those buildings to see what they may have gained or observed.
Is this the first year we've had this data?
This is the first year that we've used proximity learning.
Okay.
Yes.
So, then, the half-empty question is, you've already somewhat answered it. What do you foresee some conversation around the supports of these fifty percent DNFs that did not succeed? If fifty percent got the As, Bs, and Cs, is fifty percent essentially get the Ds and Fs?
So, good evening. And, Dr. Stubblefield, thank you for allowing me to come up. Dr. Nguyen, just to provide you some, a little bit of information as we take a deeper dive this summer, one of the things that, as we looked at this data, we recognized some of the challenges of which you were speaking of. Challenges specifically were around student attendance. When we looked at the students that enrolled in some of the courses, the rostering, some of those students were still left on the rosters, which skews the percentage of the overall data. That was one of the things that we recognized. We also recognized challenges of getting the work submitted for the final grades. And so, some of the things that proximity learning and myself, along with the leadership and learning team, have committed to is, number one, all of the proximity teachers will be going through the same training this upcoming school year with our classroom teachers so that they can be in line with the expectations around instruction and the grading system. The other thing that proximity learning is committed to is implementing what's called book audits and grade audits. So, if we are seeing students' grades that are falling beneath a certain level within a twenty-four-hour period, that, that will be shared directly with the building administrators. Initially, you know, hindsight 2020, that information, we had our aides and our supports within the classroom, but that information did not always filter down. But, some of this is standardizing the expectations moving forward. The other piece that we are looking at is making sure that with proximity, fully utilizing our curriculum and, and our tiered resource supports, again, so that we can do that comparative data of truly looking at, these are the same resources that proximity learning teachers are utilizing, along with our in-person classroom teachers. They're going through the same professional development. We're looking at attendance for those students and reporting that back in a timely manner and not leaving students on a roster for an extended amount of time who may not have been present in those classes.
So, who was responsible for that recording?
So, recording the attendance is the responsibility of the proximity teacher, but getting that information to the administrator, there was a gap there. So, we want to make sure that we tighten up in that area so that we are looking at, if a student has been gone out of this class, kind of in the same way that we do three or more days, consecutive days, is there something going on with this student? And that alignment had not taken place with proximity. Again, learning this, rolling this out for the first year, we see some of the challenges and some of the gaps that we had, that we are working to, correct?
So, are those incorporating to the renewal contract?
Which piece?
Just what you're saying.
The professional development, all of that, yes, yes.
Okay. I don't remember seeing it, but that's okay. If you say it's there, because otherwise, proximity could very well say, these expectations are not included in the contract.
Yeah. And I think Dr. Robinson is on, but those are the expectations. I will drill down, again, because they have a certain amount of days that we provide support, they provide professional development support, they typically would go with their team, but they will be joining KCKPS's professional development model.
Do you, by any chance, know where in the contract that is?
I don't.
Okay.
But I will find it, and if it is not verified, because that has been the discussions as we have talked about, some of the gaps with the partnership. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like me to make a motion to accept, move to accept J like Jack?
Thank you.
Jack.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our communications. Dr. Stubblefield?
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things that I want to share and highlight. We held our second annual When You See Me Conference. Understanding our differences and learning how to embrace them was a part of the When You See Me Conference held on Friday by the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. The event was free to the public and provided an opportunity for open dialogue to help adults move away from preconceived beliefs and personal biases they may have toward people and particular students. The all-day event featured several keynote speakers and breakout sessions centered around how people view others and impact, and the impact it has on them. I want to thank Dr. Kene Salinas, Woolley, Salinas, and her staff for organizing this event, and they did a great job, and we're looking forward to hosting it again in the future. Today, I also had an opportunity to see a pre-show to Sousa Co. The Kids at Gloria Willis Middle School. The Kansas Academy of Theoretical Arts is hosting a middle school theater camp at Gloria Willis. I enjoyed the performance that they provided for me. They had a show at 1:50 for the student body, and I had a meeting conflict. So, they said they would do a little highlight for me this morning, and I was excited. It gave them a chance to warm up. But, there is, their big performance is tomorrow at 6:30 PM at Gloria Willis in its free admission, so please don't miss it. And then, I'll have the dates coming up, but they're also going to perform The Whiz in a few weeks at Washington High School, so I'll remind individuals of that. And we have several students from Kansas City, Kansas, Budweiser Schools that are a part of that theater group this year. So, it was great to see them this morning. Today, we also had the Social Justice and Equity Coalition of Wyandotte County, and KCKPS hosted a youth think tank to bring students together to share their voices about how to tackle violence in the schools and the community. More than one hundred, I think it was about exactly a hundred and twenty, it may have been a little more, eighth through high, eighth grade through high school students from the district's summer learning program. And then, we had some students register on their own, gathered at Central Office to offer their ideas and insight. And I want to thank all the staff, community organizers, and all of the board members and those who came today. Our students did really share some very insightful ways that we can start to address the root cause of the violence within our schools and our community. I want to give a shout-out to our communications and marketing team for being the 2023 National School Communications Awards Contest recipient. The honors included three awards of excellence, five awards of merit, and six honorable mention awards. A total of fourteen awards were handed out in the categories for outstanding marketing materials, videos, publications, and social media. So, congratulations. And finally, the last day of summer learning is Wednesday, June 28th, that is tomorrow. I want to thank all of our students and parents for participating in the program this year. I would also like to thank the staff for their hard work and preparation that was put in to ensure that our students were able to take advantage of the activities and the enrichment and the learning. We will be sending out a participation survey, and we look forward to the feedback. We also will give an update to the board, and board, remember, we will give a full update in the fall, once we have the SPASF scores to compare, to make the comparison. So, it won't be like a quick turnaround in July, it'll come in the fall. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board, any other comments from anyone?
I was at Frank Russian this morning.
Yolanda, this is Randy.
Great. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1409.33]
it sounds like, going on this summer. So thank you for everyone, for all your work you're doing this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Any other board?
Thank you. Just like to say that on June 14th, I attended the foundation of the annual 30-30 Golf Tournament. And I just wanted to say that we had great support from students within our district and to thank Crystal Watson and her staff for the work that was done. It was very good to see them out and being involved so that we can help our students as they grow, to be able to continue with their career and education. On June 21st, they had a stakeholders' meeting at Children Mercy's Park for the informational plan for, there will be a World Cup here in Kansas City in 2026. And they are reaching out to various school districts, and I attended to listen as to how they want to engage our community here in Wanda County. I'd like to say Dr. Stubblefield was there also in person for that particular thing. I've also attended teacher negotiation meetings. We did have an academic committee meeting on the 22nd. And then also yesterday, we were here for the budget meeting. But overall, I would just like to say thank you to the teachers and the staff in the school district at the schools, but more importantly, to the people here in the central office. You have done an excellent job in making sure that we get accurate information, so that we'll know what is going on. And at this particular time since the summer, people have a tendency of believing there's not a lot of work that needs to be done, but you are moving above and beyond. And I just wanted to take the time to say thank you, teacher, and every one of you. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Yeah, I too attended the golf tournament. It was exciting. It looked like everybody had a lot of fun. Golf is not my thing. Attended the academic committee meeting. I thought that was good. And we're starting to get parents to come. That's a good thing. We need everyone involved. Teacher negotiation, we're still working. Hopefully, we can get that resolved. And the Juneteenth parade was good. Had a good time. Didn't ride the bus, but I was there. And also attended the one on Quandero as well. And we had the budget meeting yesterday. So it's always exciting and fun to talk about money and try to figure it out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark, I'm sorry, I have one other thing. One of the things I, I try to do as a board, I don't show up anywhere just to surprise people. And I want to publicly make sure that anyone knows that if you would like for me to please come, please invite me. I will come, but I just won't pop in at any given time. And so my door is always open, whereas I can come and visit and see what's going on within the schools, within the office, or anything. But please invite me. Thank you.
Any, any other comments? As a reminder, our office will be closed Tuesday for the Fourth of July holiday. So just as a reminder to our community. All right. So next, we have our board updates and approvals. First up, the recommendation is that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the quote from Core Electric in the amount of $26,500 for the, for replacement of the electrical feeder line to North Central Office Business A. In accordance with the requirements of board policy, D.J.E.D., this is being recommended by Mr. Correll, Director of Purchasing, Mr. Steve Lilly, Chief Operating Officer, and as a recommendation of Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any, any questions? Or, again, these are things that have been brought before us before. So there's no questions or comments. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have early childhood class observations. The recommendation is that the Board of Education, I'm sorry, the recommendation is that the Kansas City, Kansas School Board of Education approve the class booking forms as submitted by Dr. Megan Cook, Director of Early Childhood, Head Start, Dr. Amy Washington, Executive Director of Elementary, and Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, board? Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Um, next, we have, the recommendation is that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between KCKPS and Urban Stations KCK for the 2023-2024 school year as submitted by Dr. Fernandez Flores, Executive Director of Diploma Plus College and Career Instructional Programs through Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Clark, I have a question. How many students are participating, have participated, going to participate?
Dr. Fernandez Flores, do you know off the top of your head, I know myself and Lisa, if you know, you can come, Lisa Martinez met with this organization. They've been working with our schools for quite a while. So I think it varies by the schools, and it depends on the projects that they're doing at that time. So they do things with specific classrooms and like with the early childhood program that's next to them, they do, they do a lot of activities and things with them. So the number varies. All of the kids in those schools, depending on the projects, have access to it, if they have interest in it, as they say, this is what we're working on at that particular time, was my understanding when I met with them. Dr. Fernandez Flores, is that based off of what, you know, yeah, so it varies by the projects.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the recommendation that the Kansas City, that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the low bid from Vasquez Commercial Contracting in the amount of $931,600 for the electrical upgrades at J.C. Harmon High School. In accordance with the requirements of board policy, D.J.E.D., the recommendation is coming from Mr. Lilly, Chief Operating Officer, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez? Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Uh, Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, we have, the recommendation is that the Kansas City, Kansas, the Kansas City Board of Education accept as approve the additional, the addition to the contract of, I'm sorry, the addition to the contract for Florae School Solutions LLC with Kansas City, Kansas, with KCKPS as submitted by Fernandez Flores, Executive Director of Diploma Plus College and Career Instructional Programs through Dr. Judith Stubblefield, um, Dr. Jud- Judith Campbell, sorry, Deputy Superintendent, and Dr. Lowry, Executive Director of Special Education, as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments?
I don't quite understand the purpose or the investment here. And so I've reread through them. I don't understand how it's different from a typical library system, barcoding.
It's not, yeah.
So some clarity on what it is we're being asked and what the relationship, because it's saying in addition to the fol- the.
Follet concept. So we have follet destiny for our library systems, and we've had it for a long time. In February, the board, for the library side of the district, and throughout the course of this year, we discovered that in other areas, we don't have an inventory system like we do in our library system. So in February, the board approved the addition to expand the cloud space and the other software type of equipment. This, quite frankly, is so that, this, what you, we're asking you to approve tonight, is for, for the actual inventory to take place. And the goal is to have all of our resources, curriculum resources, our sped resources, our sped equipment, in the same system, so we can keep better track of it and be more fiscally responsible. And that way, we know, like, if a teach, if a class set of books are supposed to be assigned to a teacher and they never get checked out, we have a better way to lean in and say, hey, these books should have been in Algebra I. They were nev- what is, that kind of thing. Because right now, and it's depending on the department or the area, they're all on different spreadsheets and Google Drive. So the expense is the, honestly, the manpower to get it done before the start of the school year, just based off the challenges that we have had the last year or two. So that's, you're approving the actual inventory and the barcodes itself.
Okay. I will just say, for the record, I'm personally struggling with this dollar amount around barcoding books and understanding if this is something we truly want to prioritize in this way and not. I don't have a clear understanding of how this moves student achievement, because I'm not necessarily hearing the classroom aspect not being successful without this system. And so I just am for the record saying I'm struggling with it, and why it's something that the capacity of our librarians or our library aides, it's not a, a possible thing to expand. So yeah, that is why I will vote no, is I am just struggling with the dollar amount and what other options have we explored to, so, thank you.
Absolutely. And I completely understand that. We have 235,000 textbooks. So once it all gets done this summer, there are, at our secondary schools, we actually have textbook individual, so this will become their responsibility. So this is a one-time cost, just so that we know that. And then, direct correlation to student achievement, just being completely transparent, we know, we heard from the public, like, around, like, there's no curriculum and there are no books, but that'll help us to make sure that those things are being distributed, or where the gaps are, and those kind of things. Because we say, you know, we have books and we have curriculum, but our, our system's in place, our tracking system. So I respect that and understand that. So, yeah.
I, I just want to comment. I think we've needed this for a long time, because too many times, we don't know where what is what. And then if the same person is not there to do the inventory at every school, stuff is coming in and nobody knows. And that shouldn't be the case. But this should help. And it's a one-time thing to make sure everything is barcoded, everything. And we should have records here and at the school. So it shouldn't be a problem if somebody says, we have 50 books, we need additional 20, maybe Eisenhower, that was always a problem, and no one really knew. If that particular school didn't do a good job of bookkeeping, it's a problem. But if we could share, we know they have an extra 20 here. I don't know if we'll set it up where they'll return it back. But I think coding system wouldn't hurt, because we need to know what we have. And we don't know what we have. And we're leaving it up to Sally, who's always done it for the last 20 years, she retires. Maybe she was more meticulous than the new person. So at least if we have the system, it'll help.
I don't disagree. I just believe that we have lots of systems. And a lot of it isn't even, it's the sustainability of the ability to continue to use, utilize the systems we have now and utilize them well. And I don't want to argue or belabor.
No, no, no.
And I'm not saying that's what you're saying.
No, no.
But I'm just saying.
I respect what you're saying. I guess the question, you're saying, we have all these other systems. What are they and where are they?
Again, just one, my own perspective, yes.
Any other thoughts or questions before a call for the vote? Ms. Smith, please?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez? Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, no.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the recommendation that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the salaries for classified staff and administrators, administrators as submitted by Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director of Business and Finance, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, board?
I just have a question, Dr. Stubblefield. When will we receive the three-year, or have we received the three-year budget of, of budgeted and actuals for the departments?
For the departments. Ms., we'll, the next time we'll have a budget meeting is in July 18th. So I'll get with Ms. Kaiser, so we should be able to get it to you. Is next week or either the week? We can definitely get it to you a week bef- at least a week before the 18th meeting.
And can we have the 22, 23 classified pay schedules, so that we can compare what you are recommending?
Ye- yes.
Because on the current department budget reports, you can't determine what the salary is of professionals, administrators, or secretaries.
We can get you the classified pay schedule, the current, and then what this would do to it, so you'll have a comparison. And then the three-year budget reports, we have something that's created, but I'll attach it to the Friday. And if that's not what you're looking for, like, we'll, we'll get it to you and make sure that you have it.
Thank you.
Can you restate the motion?
The recommendation is that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the salaries for classified staff and administrators were submitted, as submitted by Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director of Business and Finance, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools. Any other questions or comments? Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Thank you. Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Next up is our new business. If you have any questions specifically about any of the items that have been listed, these are items that will come before us again for a final, for a final approval.
What are we talking, number A? Is that what we're talking?
Yes, letter A.
So what, what are we applying for? Are we receiving, the grant will provide up to four million. Can you be specific as far as the, have I not read far enough the amount of the grant?
So the grant is for, would provide up to four million over a five-year period. And this is through the University of Iowa, and they are wanting to partner with Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools and Olathe Public Schools. And the purpose of the grant, it is assessments that provide feedback to increase student math achievement around algebra readiness, improve, and the bullets are there. So it's, the University of Iowa has done research around this, and they're seeking a grant. And, and what you would be approving today is for us to, for them to say that we would, we would potentially partner with them. But at any time when we get more information, or if something comes back, we could say that it doesn't work for us. Because of the way our board meetings are set up, this would be new information today, and then the board would, would vote on it on July 18th. But that's so that they would at least know that we have interest in it, and when they have to submit the application by August 1st.
So is it, is it sharing of data?
Um, that would be a part of it, but is actually assessments, it would be a part of, I believe, and if Dr. Conrad is on, you can chime in, but it actually is a part, it will be assessments as, I think, similar to our common assessments around algebra readiness for particular students. But we would share data, absolutely. It will be our students participating, taking part in the assessments.
Thank you.
Similarly, what are the outcomes? And I'm assuming at the July 18 meeting, you'll have more of the budget expectations. Will that information be provided? I'm assuming the deadline for notice of intent has already passed. So I'm assuming we already said, said yes to that. But where do we get the more concrete information around?
So once they have the actual grant application, we can bring that back to, so the notice of intent was submitted by the University of Iowa, ju- not us. And so now, what we have to share with them is that while they service that notice, notice of intent to that department, is that Olathe and KCK would have to say, yes, we would, if they received this grant, we would potentially, we partner with them. The financial component is a 10% match, which includes in-kind donations. The in-kind is like our staff implementing it. But I can ask Dr. Conrad what specifics that we can have prior to the 18th around that.
So I'm trying to also understand the relationship between the University of Iowa and the assessment, but also Olathe Public, the relationship to why Olathe Public Schools and why KCK, and what the data, what the metric around utilizing those two school districts. Then I guess my last question is, is it 10% match of the four million, or it's 10% match of a piece that directly correlates to this assessment for KCKPS? So regardless, is Olathe giving 10% and KCK of the four million? And then, or is it just the part of the partnership that's relative to the budget of KCK service provided inquiry? So.
So I haven't noted, and we'll get that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments around letter A? Not, we'll go to the next one.
I, my last question.
Yes.
Something else. Also, can we also confirm what other, I believe we're also partnering with somebody else on something else in the DERA world. So I just wanted to clarify what that is, too. I thought we were, I thought we saw something else before. Thank you.
Next up, the recommendation is to accept for information, as an informational item, the recommendation to approve the use of the 3DE instructional model for F.L. Schlegel and J.C. Harmon High Schools and Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Now, they're going to start with these two, and depending on how it works, they'll add the other high schools?
Potentially, yes. It's, the, like, there is a cost to it, so we would evaluate it. But these two schools were selected because they are our ISI schools, so technically our two lowest-performing high schools. And so if the data comes back that this is great for all kids, then we would bring it back to the board to potentially expand it in other high schools. Yes.
Did we not implement this previously? I thought this had come, so this is the, so we've had a partnership with JA, but we have not explored this specific.
Yes. We have other components with JA. This is expanding our partnership, in particular around the 3DE model. It's currently, they implemented it in their first full year at Northeast Public Schools, in Kansas City, Missouri, and Olathe Public Schools last year, and preliminary. And preliminary have seen some really good results. And nationally, overall, I've had, seen good results.
Anything else? Then lastly, for our new business, the Kansas, the recommendation that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education accept as an informational item a random of understanding between KCKPS and KU Medical Center for the 2023-2024 school year. Any questions or comments? Hearing nothing? So if you have questions or you think of something, board, you want to make sure you send those to Dr. Stubblefield, so she can get those answers for you, because these will be coming before us again for a final decision. Next, we'll move into our, our board reports. The recommendation is that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education accept as an informational item for the academic and discipline data update, as submitted by Dr. Conrad, Executive Director of TIS and DIRI Leadership Learning Team through Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
And I believe Dr. Conrad is online.
I am online. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, good evening, Vice President Clark and Dr. Stubblefield and board members. I am going to share this evening some of the end-of-year data. Hopefully, my screen is showing it. Looks like it is, so we should be good to go. I am Dr. Conrad, the Executive Director of TIS and DIRI. And tonight, let me make sure that clicks, yep. This evening, we're going to discuss the end-of-year data points and areas of focus that we've had. So chronic absenteeism is one thing that we're going to discuss in getting students to school, making sure that they're there and present. And then we're going to talk about some of the behavior data. So that really is keeping students in school and engaged. And then we're going to discuss how this impacts some of our academics and our outcomes. And at the end, we'll also have an opportunity to look at some school profiles that we're starting to develop to help us really with that data-driven decision-making square that you see up there. All so that we can achieve our, our goals. And so first, we're going to talk about attendance. We're going to specifically focus on chronic absenteeism. As Student Services has presented data around the attendance in prior board meetings, we're going to specifically focus on chronic absenteeism within the buildings. And so we have, we have it broken up by levels. So you're going to see half the elementary schools on this page, on this slide, and then half on the next slide, and then middle schools and high schools. So the name of the school, and then the chronic absenteeism rate from last school year, or two school years now, the '21, '22 school year. And then the next column is the chronic absenteeism of this school year, '22, '23 school year. And then the change. We could see that all schools, all elementary schools saw a decrease in the percentage of their students that were chronically absent. It's color-coded, so you see that Eugene Ware had a significant decrease in that. Frank Rushton Grant also had large decreases in chronic absenteeism. All had a decrease. Some were just more than others. We also see in the chronic absent 2023 rate that Eugene Ware was below that 25% threshold. And so you'll notice that 2022, we didn't have any buildings that were below that threshold. And this year, we started seeing some buildings below that threshold. Here are three more schools that are below that threshold now. And again, all elementary schools saw a decrease. In our middle schools, we also saw a decrease with all of our middle schools. None managed to get underneath that threshold, but all were able to see that, that decrease. Argentine Middle School and Rosedale had the largest decreases in chronic absenteeism. Our high schools, we did have one high school that did see an increase, but other than that, we did see decreases with all of our high schools. And Sutner continued to be below that 25% threshold and brought that even lower this go-around. So we, overall, as a district, our buildings, we're seeing a decrease in our chronic absenteeism. We're getting kids to school. What we're doing is working. We need to continue to push forward with that. And so let's switch over to behavior. Now that we're getting them through that door, are we keeping them there? And are we keeping them engaged? This is just one measure that we can look at to make sure we're keeping them in the building and that they're staying engaged. So again, we set it up by school, and we compared it from a prior year to this year. And then we're also looking at that change. So you can see here that Banneker actually increased a little bit. That rate is still low. I color-coded these because we looked at suspension rates across all of the different levels. So we could just see that elementary just tends to be a lot lower, which is a good thing. We did see Grant Elementary significantly decrease in the number of suspensions or the suspension rate in the buildings. All the other elementaries were either very close to maintaining or decreasing, but their numbers are so low in suspension rates that it's very hard to see change at this point. And so they're either maintaining or, or they are decreasing, but very low. At our middle schools, we saw decreases across the board, significant ones at Arrowhead and Eisenhower Middle Schools. We are almost under the 10% threshold at three of those buildings. Two are Gloria and Rosedale, and Arrowhead is right there, almost beneath that threshold as well. Our high schools all saw a decrease except for Sutner Academy, which is very low to begin with. And so again, it's hard to see change at that level. But we did see decreases across the board there. We broke it down by race and grade. And so we put this on the same chart where you have the grade levels going down the first column. And then across the first row, you have the race. We color-coded it so that we could see cells that are popping out. And this is the percent of students of that particular race and grade level that experiences suspension. And so you can see after elementary school or elementary grades, we have more suspensions taking place. We can also see that within two of our subgroups, two of our, our larger subgroups of Black or African-American multiracial, we see a higher number of those students being suspended. And so there's also Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islanders and American Indian or Alaskan Native that have some real bright spots of reds. But we also have very low N counts there. And so to really make this clear, anything that has an asterisk has fewer than 10 students. So we wanted to look at the change. And so we know from this slide, we have some areas that are high. But I wanted to look at, is it increasing or decreasing from the prior year? And so it's the same chart, but if there's an N count lower than 10, I went ahead and started those out. And so at any particular grade level, there are N counts lower than 10 across the board. But we do see, this is the percent change. And so if we look at second grade, Black or African-American, it's 50%. So that is a 50% change or increase. It's, it's a positive change in the number of students being suspended. And as those words came out of my mouth, I understood that's not very clear. So let me try that again. So second grade, Black, African-American, fewer students were suspended. That's a positive thing. And so we, I, I highlighted that in green as that's a positive thing. Fewer students are being suspended. And then if you look at 11th grade, in the white category, 58%. So that's a negative number, meaning more students were being suspended. So that number actually went up, so the percentage went down. So more students were being suspended, 11th grade white students. And so across the board with our Black, African-American students, we're seeing a decrease of students being suspended. Same with Hispanic, but we did see some increases in multiracial. And so specifically in ninth grade, that also was an increase. So we, we need to be mindful and watching that to make sure that as we're getting students in the door, we are not asking them to leave. We also look at engagement or the incidences that are happening within the classrooms that teachers are constantly or consistently dealing with. And what we want to do is make sure that our buildings are decreasing the number of repeat offenders. So as students are, are not engaged or acting out in certain ways, there's a reason for that. And we want to make sure we're addressing that underlying reason and reducing the number of students that have multiple incidences. So that orange line, we want it to be as close to the blue bars as possible. And you could see in the first semester, September, October, students were repeat offenders. And so that orange line is well above the blue line. But second semester, we start to see that narrow down. And really, that's what we're hoping to see, is that we are reducing the repeat offenders. We also break it down by incidences, race, and gender. So we're still seeing a high number of incidences with our Black, African-American students and Hispanic students and with our male students. So this needs to be a continued focus of ours to see what we can do to better support our students within the classrooms so that these behaviors are addressed in, in a positive way. And Student Services has reported on, on the things that they're doing within the buildings as well. So I won't spend too much time on that. Here's the type of incidences that are occurring. We see that the three highest from last year, the blue bar is 2022, are again, the highest this year, which is the orange bar. And defiance of authority or gross disrespect, gross disruptive behavior, and skipping class. And so these also feed into, I'm going to skip ahead a few slides, into where it's happening, mainly in classrooms and in hallways. And this is where students interact with staff and students interact with other students. And so we could see that those things go hand in hand of where the incidences are happening and what the incidences are, such as defiance or disruptive behavior or skipping class. So we also wanted to look at average incidences by month. And the interesting trend that we see here is that last year, the blue bars of 2022, we see an increase in second semester in, in two of those months, so February and April. But this year, in 2023, in the orange bars, we don't see that second semester. We see a decrease in every month, second semester. And so the things that were taking place in first semester and working on appear to have paid off second semester, and we see a reduction of average number of incidences. Still, our highest days are going to be Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so those are days that I think that we can prepare for, know that they're coming, and work on ways to alleviate some of those triggers that are sparking these incidences on those days. And so we, we're getting kids there. We're seeing that we're keeping kids in classes this year at a higher rate. We're not suspending them as much. And we are cutting down on those incidences that are disruptive in the classrooms. And so we want to look at how this is impacting some of our academic data. And we know that some of this data is going to be lagging data. It takes, it takes a while, so we're seeing improvements this year in the other two measurements. And, and so it may take a year or so for it to show up on some of the lagging indicators. So FastBridge is one that we give three times a year. We are charged by the state to give a dyslexia screener, and FastBridge meets that requirement for us to screen students for dyslexia. The first thing that we see here is the early math. And so we, what we would prefer to see, what we're shooting for with MTSF is to have that high-risk category under 20%. And so we're not quite there yet. And we're unfortunately seeing a decline. Fortunately, we're seeing an increase in the low-risk category. So we started with 40% of our students in the fall on low risk, and we ended with 43% of our students in the low-risk category. So we did see an increase there. By grade level, kindergarten and first grade saw those increases of students in the low-risk category. In our primary, we, we saw a decrease from fall, or I'm sorry, from winter, that middle blue bar. But we saw a huge increase from the fall. And so our primary grades, our preschool, went from 44% in the fall to 85% on the spring assessment. So that's, that's huge leaps and bounds there. We also broke it down by race. And again, across the board, we saw increases except for multiracial and American Indian, Native, Alaskan. But the other race categories, we did see improvements on that. Overall, our A-math scores, we would like to see some risk and low risk be under 20% combined. We have a little ways to go to work on that. And we didn't quite see the same jumps that we saw with the early reading when it came to increasing it from fall to spring. We stayed relatively flat. Here, we broke it down by grade, and you can see at each grade level, fourth grade increased, 10th grade increased by a small percentage. But relatively, we saw ups and downs across the board, across the grade levels. And then by race, we also saw decreases in most areas except for Native Hawaiian, other Pacific Islander. We did see an increase there from fall to spring. American Indian, Native Alaskan also saw an increase. Here is our early reading, so this is going to be pre-K through first grade. We did see an increase in our high risk for our reading. And overall, the percent of students that were in that category, we saw a big drop. So this was almost the exact opposite of what we saw in math. We saw a huge decrease from fall with our pre-K students to spring with our pre-K students going from 75% down to 36%. Race-wise, we, Hispanic, we saw an increase from fall to spring. But most others, we saw a decrease from fall to spring when it came to early reading. Saw a similar trend in A-reading, where it was relatively flat across the board. We would like to also see this number of some risk and high risk below 20% combined. of some risk and high risk below 20% combined. See across the grade levels, pretty consistent from fall to spring of either a slight decrease or staying the same, except for we did in grade seven, saw an increase there. Grade nine had a slight one, and grade 10 also had a slight increase. Then by race, we see that American Indian had and Native Hawaiian had the decreases on this one, where every other one stayed relatively flat or decreased just a, a small percentage point. We also looked at district common assessments. Now, this year was our first full year of doing district common assessments, where we had four throughout the school year. We were able to do some preliminary matching of our common assessment data and our state assessment data. It's been very promising. We, we've seen the correlations there, higher than our FastBridge correlations on how predictive our common assessments are going to be able to be. And this is also some of the work that was mentioned earlier with the grant, since we're already doing this work with common assessments. Olathe is doing some work with common assessments as well. And the algorithm we use stems from the University of Iowa. So this grant feeds into things that we are already participating in and doing. Just kind of adds to it a little bit. We did see with math, an increase of our students that are mastering standards every quarter, ending with the fourth quarter being our, our highest quarter of mastery of standards. We broke it down by grade level. As we progress through the grades, we notice a trend of it being a little bit more difficult to master the standards. Also broke it down by school. So here's all the elementary schools so that we can target our supports accordingly. So this is the percent of standards that were mastered at each building. Here's the middle schools and the high schools. So we can see as they move up throughout the grades, it becomes more difficult to master some of those standards. ELA looks somewhat similar. They did have third quarter as their highest quarter for mastery of standards, but we saw an increase over third and fourth quarter. Again, as, as ELA builds over time, we see that fewer students are able to master those standards. And we also broke it down by school so we can, again, target those supports. And here are the middle school and high school results. We also broke it down by race, and the blue bar is ELA, or reading, and the orange bar is math. We could see that reading, we were able to master more of those standards than what we were able to master in math. And that's across all race categories. We are seeing discrepancies or gaps that still exist between races within our district. And so some are larger than 10%. We'd like to narrow that gap more. And so that's an area of focus for us. So the next steps, there's, there's things that are going really well, and I think that are going to continue to build as we get our students in school and as we keep them there and keep them engaged. We're going to continue to see improvements. We are looking at working with KU and the Kite platform and the State Department of Education and building our common assessments within the platform of Kite, the same Kite platform that is used for state assessments. And so that way, our students will have more experience in that platform, and we'll be able to build a tool in there that will get us that data back in a way that will be more comparable or comparable to, to the state assessment. We also will be focused on using PLCs more effectively to utilize this data in conjunction with other data points to help them make game time decisions as they are, are working with those students. Also to help in the decision-making process, we are looking at using one page, a one pager to help us understand where the building is and how we can best support the building and where the building could use more support. And so we created one pagers, profiles of the building. I know that there were a few things in here that we can clarify or that we can add to it to make it more meaningful. I just wanted to briefly go over this really quick. And so the way that we built the top quadrant is we were able to put all stu-, all schools on here to see where they land in each of the quadrants. And so in quadrant one, the schools that are listed there had higher achievement and lower building risk factors. Quadrant two had higher achievement, but they had higher building risk factors. Quadrant three had lower achievement and higher risk factors. And quadrant four had lower achievement, but low building risk factors as well. We also put the size of the circle as the risk level that was coming into the building. And so to, to kind of explain it, where the students, where the schools landed, we have student risk factors here. Things that students come into school with or things that we are helping to alleviate. So chronic absenteeism, suspensions, your percent of ELL students or your percent of sped students. Those are all things that we are helping parents and the community as they come into our schools to support our, our students better. So those are, those are risk factors. And the color coding is exceeding the district average is green. Yellow is, it's around the district average within some error. And then the red is below the district average. And so for this building, we could see that there are additional things that we can do to better support the building. And then the building risk factors are things that are meant to help alleviate some of those risk factors. So as students are coming in with these risk factors, here are some things that we are attempting to do to help alleviate those risk factors. The color coding remains the same. And so if they are implementing MTSF or the level of their implementation of MTSF helps with some of the academic side, some of the behavior, social emotional side, those are things that we're doing to help offset some of the suspensions, the chronic absenteeism with engagement. Then we have other building factors, such as the school climate around behavior. That's how teachers view the behavior in the building, the leadership, students themselves, how the staff in the building view leadership, how they view students. The teacher absenteeism rate, we need teachers there. Teacher experience in the district. And so we believe that teachers past that three-year mark really have the skills or the foundation that they, they need to really excel. Years zero through three, we're still building some of that capacity. It's not true for every teacher, but we just made the, the cut of zero to three years. And then the, when they ask for additional staff, what that ratio then becomes. So here we have Carl B. Bruce that has asked for additional staff, and we see that that ratio has taken it pretty low. So these are things that we can go back to Carl, Carl Bruce and say, okay, how do we better support you in these areas to make sure you're doing well here? And then we're looking at the outcomes, not only how they're doing, but how they're growing. So you'll see the aggressive growth along with who's in college pathway and low risk. And so maybe you are not, you don't have a high percentage of your students in college pathway and low risk, but you are making a lot of aggressive growth with your students. And so we wanted to make sure that we acknowledge those two things. So I know that there's additional stuff that we want to view in here, and we're going to continue to build this out so that it becomes meaningful when buildings say, I have these risk factors. We need additional resources because of what's here. Here's the things that we are doing with those resources to help alleviate some of those risk factors. And look, here's our outcomes associated with our risk factors, what we're doing to alleviate those risk factors and how we're changing the trajectory for our students. We can also come up to the top quadrant, and we can start to identify, okay, here's another high-risk school. What are they doing? Or how are they doing it? And so if we wanted to look at a Douglas or Eugene Ware, Eugene Ware might be better there, and then Emerson, they both bring risk with them, right? Some student risk. So what are they doing to alleviate some of that risk? And what are their outcomes looking like? So it's all on one page so that we can have better conversations and visualize what are they doing and how can we better help support. So at this point, that concludes my portion of the, the presentation. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Dr. Conrad, for that presentation. I know we do have board members. Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you. I'll go, let's, let's work backwards from your, your slide. Using the slide you used about Carl Bruce and the risk factors. Let's just, just, you said on the math outcomes, the, the slide down, yeah, the 15.25%. 2023% of aggressive growth. Growth of what?
So within FastBridge, it measures who is making aggressive growth. So FastBridge actually breaks it down into categories. In this specific category, we have 15% of those students making that aggressive growth within the platform.
And that is what? You know, is, is there? How do you determine growth? Is it a percentage? Is it a number?
Yes, i- i- it goes off of their increase. And so we have some students that are increasing faster than other students and especially faster than what their expected score was. And so if I take an assessment, my first assessment, and I get a 270, and we take all the 270s that happened in the past, and we see where they went. And so the next time I take that, that assessment, now I'm at a 290. Well, what, what percentage of students started at a 270 and made it to a 290? And they, FastBridge then sets that cut score around. Well, most students only make it to a 280. I made it to a 20. That's aggressive growth. And so FastBridge actually categorizes that, and I'm just taking their categories and mapping it back over here.
Okay. All right. Then go ahead to your slide 44. I think that is final results, percent of mastery by race. So explain your numbers. If I'm saying math, 26, 26% Hispanic mastered the math standards? Is that what you, what this shows?
Yeah, so what we end up doing is, is percent of standards mastered by race. So 20, 26% of those math standards were mastered by students who identified as Hispanic.
Okay, so that meant essentially almost 80% did not, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Go to your slide 14, and it is suspensions.
Okay, let me go back. Got it.
Got it. Okay, so are these, and you used the reference, you referenced in another slide, repeat offenders. Are these repeaters? Are these incidents could be by the same student? It's just a straight count? What, what, what's going on here?
It, yes, it is a straight count. Sorry to, sorry to cut you off there. There's a slight lag. Did, did you have additional?
I asked you that. So these are, these are new students, old students, repeated offenders? You don't know?
No, no, no. Well, what we do know is that there is a straight count of how many students we have within each grade level. And then how many of those students experienced a suspension? They may have experienced multiple suspensions, but we know that they experienced at least one suspension. And so, for example, black African American, seventh grade, 30% of those students who identify as black African American experienced a suspension. At least one suspension.
Okay. Now, how do I or anyone take this data and use it and use your suspension data per school?
So we break it down a more narrow level where we can now look at where those incidences are happening at the school level and better support those schools, specifically when we look at supporting certain subgroups. But we also, we, we now start to lose even more information presenting it out like this because our N counts start to get really low when you break it down by grade, race and building. And so we aggregate it up so that we can share more information here, but we can share more detailed information because that N count gets in the way here.
Okay, I'll, I'll circle back to you after others have had opportunity. Thank you to ask any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Ms. Drew?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question. Will this data be presented to each school, the staff, as well as to the parents?
Under this, this particular data? Or is it the, the one pager?
Well, any part of the information that will enlighten parents as far as where the weaknesses are in relation to their students in math or reading or even in attendance and behavior problems.
Dr. Conrad, I'm, because that part of the data, like all of the schools got their profile that we share with the board. And then I am looking to a leadership and learning team because how that data is shared out with parents about their individual students or how they share it out with the staff, I'm looking to someone there to speak about it. Some, I know when they do their school improvement planning process, their building leadership teams work with, with, with them and look at the data. But I am not sure, and that's something, if somebody else can speak to it, how it's shared with the entire staff around where the performance of the, overall performance of the students. I know they use the data in their PLCs, but not necessarily in this particular format.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm not sure if Dr. Stifel answered the question. Good evening again. FastBridge data, there are individual reports that are provided for families. It's to the building's discretion on how, if that's given out during FA days or, you know, depending on the testing period and how that is shared. This information is expected to be shared to building administrators in this format and fashion so that they can also share this information with their board. And some of this information can be repeated and reviewed during curriculum nights or opening of schools. So it's to the discretion of each building. But as that question is being asked, I think we need to capture and make a definitive on how it's being shared out across the board to, from buildings to staff, staff to community.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah. I have a question around, did we survey students around their perspectives around the school building? And I say that because... And I say that because today was enlightening. Because while I'm looking at the suspension data and I'm looking at the absentee data, at the table I was at, three of the seven students identified that they had participated in fights, that they were involved, um, but they also talked about feeling as though the staff didn't do enough. Or they talked about being bullied, or they talked about the racism that exists. And so part of me, going back to the question, is how do we all bring that into perspective? Because that piece also doesn't have anything to do with the academic engagement. Those factors, it's more of how we are, um, addressing those other pieces that happen in our building. And it was disheartening that students were saying, I fight because that's my way to go home. Or that's my, because this is happening. And so some of this is not just directly tied to the achievement. And I, when I hear three of seven, that means, that tells me that there's a greater population, that suspension is their way out of some of the other things. And so I know we have trauma-informed, we have the supports. But then even when we look at what most of the suspensions are, it's because a person in the classroom has decided that they're having disruptive behavior. They're having, uh, gross misconduct. And sometimes I'm even bothered by how staff talk to students. And so, and how triggering that is, when I'm asking you for help and I don't feel like you're hearing me out. Um, and so I, so I'm trying to figure out, how do we address some of the other issues in a systemic way that I heard students talk about today as the result of violence, um, in our building, so?
So I'm gonna, um, let Ms. Walker talk about how students are surveyed. But that is one of the factors on the building profile. It shows the, uh, building factor, school climate, student average, like, um, and leadership and then behavior. So I, the student average is the student's perspective that we've gathered. And Ms. Walker can tell you which grade levels we, how often in which grade levels we're, um, surveying.
Number four, building factor, school climate, student average. That's what you're saying? It's the student part? Okay, thank you.
Correct. As a part of federal programs, we annually survey students to include that information in an annual needs assessment. At third, fourth, and fifth grade, we, um, ask, I think it's a series of twenty-five questions. Those are based on climate and culture. Also, um, if teachers are giving them challenging materials, uh, you know, student efficacy, teacher efficacy. Then we also do the Kansas Communities That Care survey for our secondary students. That is not every single grade level, um, that does participate in that. I think it's every other grade level and I can get those specifics for you. I feel like it's sixth, eighth, tenth, and twelfth, but we can tell you for sure. And, um, students are asked a variety of questions about their perceptions regarding culture and climate. If I'm remembering correctly, I believe about seventy-five percent of our forty-eight schools do include culture and climate, so perceptions of students and parents in their school improvement plan. Many of them look at the patterns of those, uh, responses and they look at the ones where students' responses are lower than what they think they should be or would like them to be, like adults at my school listen to me or help me when I have a problem. And they work on those then and typically target two to three specific questions that as a PLC and a staff, they're going to work on throughout the school year. So I would say those are relatively new for including. We started those three years ago, or four years ago, rather. Um, and now we're starting to see a larger percentage of staff members, BLTs, that are really looking at that data. And so that's what was included in the building profiles.
And then, um, one additional layer, um, where we surveyed students this year, and I did share, Dr. Biblo Irvin did share the results of the, uh, when I went out for the listening and learning, all of the, um, data that we gathered through thought exchange. And one of the questions that we, we asked, like, what are we doing well? And where have we failed you? And what can we do to improve? So the principals did, the high school, and I only did it at the high school level, um, this year, but the high school principals did receive, um, that data as well as they were, um, planning and going into next year.
Can you remind me one more time what you said the K through five-one was?
It's our, uh, it's third through fifth grade, actually. We don't do K-one, two. And it's just our, our district student, elementary student, uh, annual survey. That's done in April, and then the family survey is done annually in February. All right, thank you.
I'm gonna hop in here real quick. I don't know who, who will be able to answer my questions. But one of the things that comes to mind for me is, as I see the numbers fluctuate and, um, in some schools, we've seen some opportunities, and some schools, we've seen growth. I'm curious about what's next. So I did hear the data is provided to the school, but I'm curious about the follow-up that happens with the schools and how we're trending to see, like, what, what made the change here? What's not making the change? What's the expectations that's being set for those people that are in, responsible for those schools to make sure that things are continuing to move forward? Or how are we leveraging their expertise to make sure we can pass those on to other schools? So I don't know if there's like a what's next plan. I'm sure there is. Um, but I am curious about that because I remember having this conversation last year. Um, and then I'll just also say, it would help me for going forward, I don't, just to, like, is the, is the data consistent? When I see some of the descriptions, are we using the same descriptions yearly to categorize the same things? Or are they kind of maybe floating between places? It's one of the things that comes to mind. If Dr. Conrad was not here next year, would the next person come in and would they categorize things the exact same way so that as we're watching this, uh, as we're watching the trends, we're watching them, um, correctly? So those are just things that kind of came to mind for me, definition of absent. Is that I'm late to school? Or is that I really missed the class? Is, if I'm high school, did I miss one class or did I miss the entire day? So just what are those, what does that look like? Those are just my comments.
I, I'm happy to speak to a couple of those points. Um, so point one, uh, on, on the definitions, staying the same, you are correct. If you want to measure something over time, you have to keep the tool the same. Uh, and so we do our best job to make sure that the tool, or how we're measuring it, how we're defining it, remains the same. Now, there are some times that definitions change for a good reason. So sometimes, uh, we change the definition of a certain, or we clarify a definition of a certain behavior that needs clarification. So we, sometimes we, we see that switch. Uh, but in, in the long term, we try to keep those definitions exactly the same. Now, some of these definitions are state-defined or federally-defined. When it comes to absenteeism, there's rules around that, business rules that we adhere to. Um, and so we, we do the very best job we can to make sure that those stay the same. Now, in regards to what's next, uh, we do have a plan, uh, moving forward with our principals, uh, during our principal meetings to make sure that, uh, this is a focus and that we're looking at the same data and we're running those meetings, much like a PLC. Uh, I, I am unfortunately not the person to speak more fully on that, uh, but I am engaged in that process. So I will kick that off if somebody else, i- if you have additional questions around it. Uh, but we do have a plan moving forward. It is within those principal meetings that, that it will take place.
Well, I'll follow up with the same kind of question. What, what's the role of student services in, in this plan?
And if I could just add on, I think, to your question, some of these buildings have absenteeism rates that are out of control. And so what is the aggressiveness of us? The best way to move student achievement is for students to be in class. So what is the plan? And how, like, a school having fifty-something percent chronic absenteeism, like, that's, how do we change the needle in that work? And what is, and I know that Naomi is doing a wonderful job in understanding the data and reach, making those contacts. But like, I would hope the twenty-five percent that we saw in some of our lower percentage, we don't see. So what is the role of student services in that work?
So, and, um, if Dr. Wilson or someone from his team wants to come. Student services in the previous, typically when we do these, student services have provided, um, updates and they have given updates around the attendance works and those partnerships. And that's why, uh, as you see in the earlier slides, it's trending in the right direction. And those schools that have, um, greater disparities, they are receiving more supports. But I will turn to Dr. Wilson to share that.
I will just say, the higher ones that I'm mentioning, they have like one percent change difference. So how do we, while it's one percent, it is not significant. And I want to call a spade a spade in that respect, so.
Yeah, so one of the things we've done to really help with attendance is we go out and we do additional coaching for those schools to have higher absenteeism rates. We also know that a lot of times when students are absent from school, it's not necessarily school components all the time. So with that, we do a lot of home visits that we've started to see that move the needle. But a lot of times, students have already crossed the threshold where if they miss ten days the first month, by the time the school catches them and flags them, they're already on a downward trajectory.
And then I will just add, so for those who don't recall the definition of chronic absenteeism, it is if you miss ten days, it doesn't matter if it's excused or unexcused. So, um, some of this, like, you know, during, like, COVID and those kind of things, lots of schools saw it trend the other way. And that's not to absolve, like, what the challenges are. But it's ten or more days excused or unexcused. And so you could be out with an illness, you could be studying, you know, off. But if you're, if you're marked absent for ten or more days, it's, you're considered, uh, chronically absent.
So we've also really focused on the MTSS system and really focusing in on the who, then the what. So when we look at chronic absenteeism rates, like, we have to have our building teams to, one, identify, like, who are the kids that need the additional support? And then what is the appropriate intervention that we're putting in place? At some schools, it may be a check-in by a caring staff member that can make the difference. In other schools, it may require a home visit. It may require a check-in. It might require a check-out. After-school supports, um, to really dig into what's the root cause for the attendance measure. And one thing I can say is, our team, when we started really helping the schools in December and really helping them to drill down on the data for behavior and academics and attendance, one thing we saw, especially for behavior and attendance, is those kids that we triage with the higher level of support, that although they may have crossed the threshold, we didn't see them get any worse. Like, they stabilized, they improved. By then, unfortunately, they had already impacted the chronic absenteeism rate. So then we worked with our school teams on, now kind of knowing what's working for your school and knowing what data points to look at, what are the things that you can put in place to be proactive at the start of the school year? And what we found with a lot of the schools was, the best thing to start students off on the right track that made a difference was really emphasizing the importance of communication with parents and the reason why students need to come to school, the reason why we really need to have those wraparound supports, and we really need to have staff members that are present and show up and then let students know, like, I want you here in the space, which I think is what a lot of the students said today at the think tank.
What does that additional support look like? So if I'm a school that has fifty-five percent chronic absenteeism right now in this summer, what supports am I leveraging? Am I leveraging people who are already have a plate full? Or am I, or have we, in a sense, provided more staff support to complete those site visits? Is your team already booking their calendar to be present and to help to make sure that Billy Joe shows up to the first day of school? Because that impact and that excitement is on that first day. What does additional support look like?
So in a lot of schools, it's really making sure that, um, a lot of our school staff may have a social worker, for instance, in the school. My intervention may be that when the student comes to school, the social worker is checking in with them. Um, the social worker is a good evidence-based intervention that we can use and leverage. They can be a highly competent social worker that can triage around root supports. Um, however, looking at the student, if you're not showing up in the space, I might not be able to check in with you. So it may require us just to mobilize the intervention in a different way. Can we get the social worker and one of our team members to do a home visit? Then we're leveraging the same support, um, in the right way. A lot of times, we also found, some schools might try one intervention that may work with fifteen students, but then there's five other students that need a completely different wraparound support. They might need that and a home visit and a positive phone call when you've come to school for three out of five days this week. And the emphasis, what we did with a lot of schools, is just the same way that we can contact parents if something is going wrong. We also want to highlight when things are going right. And we saw a lot of that with our partnership with the attendance works. A lot of our grant agencies just really celebrating parents and students for the growth. So if a student had missed five days consecutively, then we're really talking about, what does the goal look like for this student and the parent to make sure that they show up together? We celebrate the student, we show up the parent. If you came to school the next week, three days. And then completing that conference and really digging in, because then we're building trust with the student and the parent. And then what happens is a lot of our parents can then say, this is what's really going on. I'm struggling with an abusive spouse. I'm kind of on the run with my child. I need additional support. Those may be things that don't show up on the initial conversation if the parent doesn't feel like they have a trusting relationship with a staff member at the school. Um, so then our conversation looks different because now we're trying to get the parent the appropriate intervention and at the same time, make sure that the student is safe when they come to school. So it's making sure we have a catalog, but then really stretching our teams and our principals and our, our building-level teams and our student services to think, team to think about outside of the box. What may work for five students might not work for the next five. Um, and with discipline, I think Dr. Nguyen was right. When you look at the data, a lot of times what we find out is, it may be the same twenty kids that has repeat offenses and nobody's paying attention to them. And then it requires a higher level of intervention to really find out what we need to do to help that student. So in preparation for our teams to come back, we're preparing that conversation so that we can springboard them with success. Um, you saw the success between January and May. You know what works. These are the processes that are in place. How do we start the year strong?
Do we have parent liaisons at all our school or just some schools?
Just some schools.
Depending on if they put that in their budget?
Yes, ma'am.
That sounds like that's something we need. I can hear some teachers saying, you know, I'm doing what I can, but we need some help. So that may be something, if we want to figure out a way to get parents more involved. If you have someone knows people in the community, who knows how to talk to people and can have a relationship, that, that seems like, that could be something that could help at every school.
Agreed.
So, uh, Ms. Page, those parent liaisons in, um, our faces, we don't have at every school. But that is data that we can, um, look at to see if those schools that have that additional staffing, when we're looking at staffing and building these assessments, to see if there is a correlation or if they have, um, more impact. And if there's a school that doesn't, as we're talking through building these assessments and what the staff may, all buildings may need, that's the data we can look at, like, moving forward. So we definitely, um, can take a look at that data and the correlation around, um, certain components.
And I would just add, I think we, right now, in our district, even, I can't even remember how long ago it was when Emerson was used as a pilot for that in the work. And when I look at Emerson's profile, while there are still areas of improvement, that was a building that wrapped around the supports of a parent liaison, a community resource individual, the classroom being a safe place for both parents and community. And so it may be worth going back and looking at how far that building has come, what all of that intel, I don't have it on the top of my mind, but I'm sure members of this board remember what that was, what that experience involved and how we continue to replicate. I think we have conversations about replicating things and there's no, there doesn't tend to be the follow-through of the rep- to be the follow-through of the replication in some of, some respects, some regards. So, sorry, Janie, didn't mean to cut you off. Second time, sorry.
We say that chronic absenteeism is 10 or more days in one school year. Do we keep track of our medically fragile children? Because when, and I'm speaking as when I was a parent and I had a child who had chronic ear problems with ear infections and stuff, and she easily missed in to 20 days a year. Do we, do we keep track of that?
Yes, yes, we do.
And the interventions or supports or structures for those look very different? Or that's where Dr. Wilson was speaking to. They, we look at the specific cause and then determine what supports are needed in those cases, yeah.
And do we have, do we know which kids missed 15 days? Who missed 20 days? Are we just look at the?
No, they, it's, they tear it and look at it, yeah.
We do have quite a few medically fragile kids in our district. And I'm just curious whether ones that we know have medical problems, if they're not, if they're doing better than the kids that just don't, that we don't know about their problems, they're just absent.
Yes, and we, and one of the things with our partnership with attendance works, the absenteeism rate between chronically absent students and health disparities has continued to widen over the last five years. So we've done some work with our health services department, partnered with Attend to Achieve to really help make sure we're wrapping the appropriate supports and having the appropriate staff member that's in place to really help those students that are medically fragile and have high absenteeism.
And then within their professional learning communities or their POCs, when the staff, they're looking at the data, they know who those students are as well and how they're providing support on the academic side or using the MTSS around what they need. And it, and I'm not saying like it's consistent in all the buildings, but that's the purpose of POCs, to look at that data, both academically, the socio-emotional data, the attendance data, to ensure that, you know, this, we have the right supports and structures for kids to make progress academically.
And then that also shows the importance of that school-family connection with the parents to make sure you understand why the student's not at school and what we can do to help them, whether it's medical problems, whether it's transportation, or whatever it is, that personal connection makes a big difference.
You, Dr. Nguyen?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I have two questions for you. When you said you do coaching, is this your first defined coaching and then your student services department does that?
Yes, so if it's at one of our schools that's chronically, has a high chronically absenteeism rate, then Naomi or a member of the Attend to Achieve team then goes out and they meet actually with the POC, with the principals, sit side by side with them and help them craft like the immediate action plan. So it's like this student, this school is in red alert, what can we do to really help kind of patch it up so you're not just continuing to have the same issue? If it's an issue where it's where we see high discipline rates, then Mr. Collins or one of our team members will go out and do kind of the same coaching. We sit beside them, look at the data, help them to process, what do you see here? Who is the students that's making up, you know, the 40% of your suspensions? Is it a repeat offenders? And then crafting an action plan. And sometimes that may be, do you need us to participate in a parent conference with you? Do we need to go on a home visit with you to really wrap around? And we've seen the power when we bring the parents into it to really begin to think about like, what is it that the student truly, truly needs? And in some cases, it may have been, I've said my student had this issue in seventh grade, but the seventh grade teacher didn't pay any attention to me, I was disrespected. And now all these years ago have gone by, the parent has disengaged from the school. And so we try to make that reconnection, but then also establishing a relationship. Because having a positive relationship with the parent and the student is the first place to begin where we want to build protective factors around kids.
So where's the documentation of that held? Where, where's it located?
Yeah, we keep track of it in student services.
Student services.
For each of the schools that we go to, yes.
Because chances are, there's always somebody who falls between the cracks. When I attended the student, the, the meeting, one parent said his, her child had been absent over 100 days and had never had any contact until later sent notice that, that the truant officer was next to come. So could, you know, her, her response would be, I had no contact. And if the documentation's not there, then where does that blame fall? Student services?
So if they had 100 absences, the first level, when we think about attendance, is going to be our building attendance clerk. Because the minute a student hits three absences, they should be making a phone call out to triage and those administrators are being included in. By the time it hits five absences, we should be talking about a parent conference or a home visit to see what we need to put in place. Because the goal is, since we know that 10 is the mark for chronic absenteeism, we want to stop them before they even get to seven. So if a student has 100 absences, uh, I mean...
Okay, so you're saying at absent number three, which the building attendance secretary is recording, and just help me walk me through the process. Do they then notify your department?
Yes.
And that's when your department goes out?
Correct.
So that documentation is there? Then the documentation is here?
Yes.
What's, what is that documentation? I called you?
Well, we keep a log, we keep a log of all of it.
Okay.
So what did we do when we came out to see you? Who was the student? It's almost like we built like a case, because if we have to go before the DA or the student is going for a truancy case, we have to turn that documentation over.
I would hope.
For interventions. Now, there have been anomalies where, and I've only seen it once this year, where there was a kid with a high number of absences, but their address had changed, the number had changed, and there was no process to actually flag, like, we need to make sure that this student has the correct address. And so we're calling, but it's not a good phone number and we can't find a parent. So it's kind of like we're in the hamster in the wheel with them, but that was only one student. Ideally, if I put my school administrator hat on, I'm going to say as a teacher, the first time I don't see you, I might think that you're sick, but if I don't have notification, day two, I'm reaching out to you. That's just the care measure. Hey, I'm missing Jermaine Wilson. You know, is everything okay? I'm checking in with you. And then on third call, and I should be logging that in the P O P in Infinite Campus, third call, my attendance clerk, we need to do some additional supports. And because third absence is what starts the truancy process.
So you're saying it should be, is there written protocol that it is required?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so I will add this, if you are aware of those specific cases and we have the name, not to share them here, but if we have that, we can look back into it to make sure that, one, it just didn't slip through the cracks and nobody called, and/or to look at the documentation and see if it was an anomaly, as Ms. Dr. Wilson described, where we didn't have a good phone number or an address? Because we do get a lot of return mail and that, and so then their team does, you know, they, we really try to find the students with our partners around that. So if you know of a specific case, we definitely can follow up and see, did it, did it, did we did actually make attempts or was the ball dropped? And if the ball was dropped, it'll help us to correct those gaps in the systems where they exist.
Last question, and thank you for your impromptu presentation. Can you remind me, are there social workers in every building or does that look different? I, just for my...
Yes, we have social workers and school counselors in every building.
Thank you.
How many truancy cases have we, did we have this year?
This year, I think we were at 37 that actually were accepted and went to the DA to where they actually had to take action on.
And not to belabor this, another, actually the most direct support for our building principals when they're navigating through this is our executive directors of schools and they have a regular schedule where they are meeting with them and all of these things and the data, that's what they are meeting and discussing with them on a regular basis.
And this may be a question for Dr. Conrad. Do we have comparative data of, of grades, chronic absences and grades?
Yes, we'll be able to correlate those two things.
No, do we have them? The cor, do we have the data?
I don't have them currently right now, but that's something that we can provide.
Dr. Nguyen, I want to clarify that I'm understanding. Did you say?
Chronic absenteeism grades?
Okay, I want to make sure I wasn't thinking chronic absenteeism per grades, like kindergarten.
That's another, I think they provided that, though.
Okay, gotcha.
But, Dr. Nguyen, I will tell you this, we can provide it at this level, but that is, those are the things that building principals and the teachers that first align, that they should be looking at. And that's the type of data that, discussions that should be happening in their professional learning communities. And so those are the kind of things that as we bring principals together and teachers, we're talking about all of that, like triaging around, like, you know, so you may have a medically fragile student, but academically, they are progressing fine and, but all of the research shows if you're not there, your grades are probably not very good. And then you have those outliers, but that's why we do so much to try to ensure that kids are actually there. Because if they're not there to receive the learning or to experience the things that are happening in schools, it's going to have a direct correlation to their grades and their assessments. And the research shows that if they're not there, they're probably not progressing academically.
Yep.
Yeah.
Board, any other questions or comments before we? Dr. Conrad, thank you so much for presenting today and the information you were able to give. Thank you, those, those of you that were here to also assist with answering the board's questions. Next, we have our board policy. And so the, the recommendation today is that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the first read of the USD 500 Student Con, Student Code of Conduct for 2023, 2024 school year, as submitted by Dr. Wilson.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Board, any questions or comments regarding our first read? And this will come back to us two other times before the, twice before the final version.
I just want to thank, first thank the committee that's working on this, but I also want to elevate my request or my just thought process of how do we engage parents in this process as well? While I recognize we have professionals within our buildings, I think it is important to always lean into parents and how they can be engaged as a part of this process to ensure that what our expectation also is an expectation that's being set by parents as well, or guardians, caregivers, insert whichever word you prefer. But I think that has to continue to be a part of the equation as we try to address not only data, but also how we ensure our students are successful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last agenda, agenda item is COVID protocols. And so, um, am I, he didn't go for, okay.
Well, I was just going to share with the board, it was brought to my attention by a board member that this policy will expire on June 30th if no action is taken. If the board chooses to do something differently, there would, action would have to be taken because it's set to expire on June 30th.
Okay, so what, if I think I hear you correctly, if the back, if the board takes no action today, then we, that means we're basically saying that we are okay with this expiring unless, unless we get a motion and it, and it passes. Okay. Just to make sure I'm clear, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. Do we continue with this policy?
I would.
For the 23, 24 academic year?
I would second that motion. And then, can I talk?
Ms. Janie was getting ready to say something here, so you seconded, okay, go ahead.
How does this differ from what we treat with other illnesses? Like, if there's a flu outbreak in a building, what's the protocol for that?
So I will start to speak, but I'm going to call Ms. Lewis up to the podium to speak because her team actually oversees it. We follow the health guidelines that are handed over by like the local health department, ADHD and CDC.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So currently with the flu, they're out five days because that is the health department's guidance, and then they return after the five days. Currently now with CDC, they have not changed the public school guidance since September. So we are still following that where when they test positive, they are out five days and then they come back for the additional five days in a mask.
And I just want to clarify, that's when they specifically say, I tested positive for COVID or I tested positive for the flu. Those are the directions that we give them.
So if my kid tests positive for flu, how many days do I need to take, keep him home?
Five for flu.
Five days for, for any illness right now?
No.
No?
So if they have strep, they have to take antibiotics for 48 hours and then they can return. I can go down each disease process, but I don't want to bore you with it.
No, okay. So if the building has an outbreak of the flu, what level do they have to have before you close the building or require other measures?
So it's dependent. If it's a medically fragile room, like a sped room, we will take probably different precautions because those students cannot mask. But if it is just our general ed classes, it will depend on how many kids are actually sick. I have not so far closed a room due to flu, but we have had some kids in our medically fragile rooms where I've had to have the conversation with Dr. Lowry and her team, like, hey, you have 10 or more students in a class of 16 that we need to really make sure we're monitoring and, and make sure everyone gets tested.
So is it the recommendation from the CDC that we treat COVID the same way as any other communicable disease?
COVID's a little different because of the contagiousness of it and because of the death rate of it. We treat it a little bit different with masking a little bit longer. We do not mask with the flu. But we can still do these protocols without the COVID dashboard, without getting to 10% if you just trust that we, you know, the health services department is going to make the best decision. And if we need to mask, masking should always be optional. I don't want to take the right away from those folks that want to mask, but just in the reality of it with budget cuts and everything, we won't be able to sustain this framework model, right? So taking it until, well, we reserve the right to continue to mask optionally, and if things happen, that's fine, working on the CDC guidance, I don't think we need the 10% threshold. I don't think we need all of that because we're, I'm still going to make sure that if a class has more than a certain amount of students in it, that we're taking the best care of them possibly, if that makes sense.
So if we, if we do not institute another COVID policy, we're relying on you to use your professional medical expertise, just like any other health-related issue in our schools? Correct?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I have faith in our health department rules, our CDC, and your department implementing what keeps our kids the healthiest and safest. So I do not think we need to have a special policy just for COVID. When I have faith that you will follow what's best for our students.
Ms. Page.
I disagree with that. I think we do need a special policy for COVID. Cause right now, no, we're not in a pandemic. But reports, and I, I've been talking to some doctors and they're saying that every, at least every day, three hundred people still die from this. And I'm not saying let's wear masks, I didn't say that. I just think we need a policy to make sure if the numbers surge, we need to go into action to do something to protect everyone. Our goal is to make sure everyone is safe. It's not like the flu. And you heard her say that. Now, you may not trust my judgment. I respect that. But I think we need to do something to make sure the kids, the adults who work here, anybody who comes in is safe.
What I think I hear Ms. Lewis say, just to make sure we're on the same page, is we have this, um, this existing policy that is in place. If this policy is not passed, then your department would put something in place to still save, I mean, to still keep our students safe. It would be separate from what the board has approved in the past, but there would be a practice that would be put into place. The practice would be in the event of a COVID surge that we as a school district reserve the right to require masking for anyone.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have those two things out there, so we have it.
No, and I was just going to say, if that's, it still needs to be a policy. I don't know why everybody's afraid of that. Cause public health is important. Our goal is to make sure everyone is safe. Now, I won't debate it. I know what I, I'll rephrase that and say this. District will continue to follow guidance and recommendations from local and state health agencies as it relates to community levels of infection. In the event of a COVID surge, KC KPS reserves the right to require masks at any time. That's my new motion. That, we never got a second on the other one. I know there was a comment.
I did.
Okay, but I didn't know, she said, you said she interrupted her.
No.
We came back, we came back and got a second, Rachel took your.
I said second and then I said, can I talk too? And she was saying that Janie was going to say something, I apologize. I would second that motion to the amendment. I do get concerned about practice versus policy. And I think policy is the best way to protect us as a district versus a practice of a professional who I also very much trust. Um, but I think for sustainability, but also consistency, should Ms. Lewis not be in her role one day? That that practice is still a practice that is followed at the direction of the Board of Education, which is within our role to say, we have a right to require anyone at any time to mask based on the recommendation of our knowledgeable, um, health services team. Thank you.
So I have two questions for you. Um, and I do support a policy. Is there an upcoming new variant that the CDC has announced?
So there's always with this disease process, something regenerating and repopulating. Right now, um, they are looking at the fall, that there may be another variant. There is another, um, immunization that is available. I won't say yea or nay because this disease process has taught us things that no other disease process has taught us. That, you know, once you think you know what it's going to do, it U-turns and does something differently. Um, I think we won't know until we know. And that's the, the fairest answer that I can give you.
Right. But they are recommending for the board, um, mature people like myself and some of us up there to take the additional booster. Um, so there's not, um, a, a, a lack of concern in, and that we put a lot of faith in you. So I would support the policy. And it, it is a protection for all of us, especially a, a district, a school district. So I support a policy.
Thank you. Can we go?
Can I wait, can I wait just for a second? Ultimately, board decides whatever you want to do on this. Um, looking long-term though, my suggestion is that you take a look at your board policy G A R, which is communicable diseases. And that ultimately you look at amending that policy to take whatever, um, information you want in place to address COVID or whatever other diseases might come up. Um, I think that's the long-term placeholder for where this belongs. When we had COVID going on during the pandemic, it was necessary to have a standalone policy. And if you want to continue that for an additional year, that's perfectly fine. But long-term, as, as COVID becomes more part of the regular landscape, I think that, that it makes sense to put language in this specific policy long-term. So whatever you decide tonight, that's fine. But I do think you should have, um, that's where it should land ultimately, so.
What is it later again?
G A R. And if you, you can pull it up, it's got, it deals with some other diseases right now, but, but that is what COVID ultimately is. And I think that is where that belongs long-term.
Ms. Page.
No, I was just going to say, thank you for that. But because this ends Friday and the New Year's getting ready to start, I think we need something. And I agree with Ms. Russell because when we go through that practice versus policy, that kills us a lot. And it comes back to haunt us. And it doesn't hurt to have a policy. So I, I made the motion, thank you, Ms. Russell, for seconding it. We vote, it's either up or it's down. I could deal with that. But there are people in the community who have asked, what happens after Friday? So that's why I asked that we put that on here now. So it's up.
Before we take the vote, what is the FU one variant that is supposed to hit in July? Okay, I'll look it up myself.
I said you can take the vote.
There are several variants, I don't want to misspeak on it because I.
Okay, I'll look it up.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was going to say you were going to ask something and then I just had another comment.
I, I was because the, the modification that was made to your, um, motion, I'm sorry, I was trying to wrap my head around.
You want me to read it again?
Well, this is what I was trying to do, yes. And I think Ms. Smith does want you to read it again, but this is what I was trying to do. I was trying to figure out the difference between that and what Ms. Lewis was saying. Um, that's where I was struggling is what the difference between your motion and what Ms. Lewis was actually saying she would.
I'm not dealing with the exceed ten percent.
It was pretty much the same what I was saying. It just added a little bit more verbiage, just saying, instead of just saying, you know, the district reserves the right to mask in the event of a surge. There was some wording before that. Okay, that's what I.
So you want to withdraw the motion? Correct?
That was my suggestion is to withdraw the motion July eighteenth. I guess July eighteenth is when we will bring other policies and could we potentially add the fir- and I'm saying this.
No, 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 you need to withdraw her motion first that you seconded. And then you have that other motion on the floor.
Dr. Nguyen's correct.
Yes. Okay, I.
But I'm, I'm asking a question about prac- like how we get to the actual G A R? Because hearing what you said, that makes the most.
I, I think, this is what I think makes sense logically. If you're looking for a placeholder to prevent the policy from going by the wayside because it will expire on its own, you could pass, uh, Ms. Page's motion or pass the second version of her motion, which maybe makes a little bit more sense because I think it is a little bit more consistent with what you're being told about the capacity of the, the school officials right now. Um, and then what would make sense to me is that, that you would then fold that policy into G A R, which you could start with in, on the eighteenth along with the other policies. And perhaps have some more provisions added to that. So if you want a placeholder in place that your COVID policy doesn't fall off the map because it's expiring, it would make sense to, to adopt something tonight to cover that. Um, but I do think it makes sense, again, for it to be located in G A R eventually. And I think that could be brought back to the board along with the other policies that are being proposed for changes on July eighteenth.
Okay, so I withdraw the first motion.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. And now I make this motion.
Okay.
District will continue to follow guidance and recommendations from local and state health agencies as it relates to community levels of infection. In the event of a COVID surge, KC KPS reserves the right to require masks at any time.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. So if that were to pass, the board is saying that we would agree to look at policy G A R as our next steps?
We'll just, we'll just separate from the motion. We're just going to assume to bring it back as part of the G A R amendment.
Okay.
And the J, J G C C is the student.
The student version, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
Well, let me just bring this up. Um, just a quick research variant. Doctors are warning that new sub-strain of Omicron FU one is spreading worldwide at a fifty percent faster rate than the Omicron substrate, AXBB one point one six. So have a good night.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Nguyen. I will call for the vote on that note. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, board, um, we have, we are, have completed tonight, so just, uh, pay attention. We have lots of moving, a lot of moving things happening right now. So our budget meeting's coming up and then there's some other updates that have been listed here for us. If we have no other comments, this meeting is adjourned.